Jack, you're muted.
You should be so lucky. Anyway, Jack Creighton, Chair of the Cohasset Select Board, we're going to open this Select Board meeting. And then we're going to close it and go into an executive session. But formally, beginning of the meeting, we have to confirm that tonight's meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for the meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called upon by the Chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participants. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hand on Zoom and at the discretion of the Chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing in Cohasset 143. All right, roll call. Corey, you're muted.
Corey Evans here.
Gene?
Gene Healy-Dippel here.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Grady.
Paul Grady present.
And Jack Creighton, present. As we start most meetings, we'll do a salute to the flag, although I think for now we'll do the salute when we go back into the regular meeting. Okay. We will be now going into an executive session exemption, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body, and the Chair does so declare. I also would want, and another exemption is to discuss personnel matters. We've had something come in within 48 hours having to do with personnel matters. So the Chair declares that as an acceptable exemption. Chair will entertain a motion to close this meeting and then to go for the purpose of going into executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to close.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to close this hearing and go into executive session. Is there any discussion?
I'm not quite sure that's the proper form of the motion, Mr. Chair.
Well, that's fine. That's fine, Corey. It'll be okay.
I think having a proper motion for executive session is worth doing. The motion would be to go into executive session.
All right, we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I call the vote. Gene?
Gene Healy-Dippel, and just to clarify, I understood your motion, Jack, was to close the public session and open the executive session. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, sorry, yes. Paul Grady.
Paul Grady, hi.
Diane Kennedy.
I got confused, I'm sorry. We're voting to close to go into.
To close the hearing and then go into the executive session.
Okay, all right, aye.
Corey?
Corey Evans, aye.
Okay, Jack Creighton, aye, the motion carries, this meeting is closed and we can go into the Zoom link for executive session. Hi, everyone. Paul, are you there?
Yes, Jack, I am here.
All right, that's good. We don't see you. Oh, there you are. Okay, one, two, three, four, five, we are all here. You know, good evening. Welcome to the August 23rd meeting of the Town of Cohasset Select Board. You know, this meeting will be conducted on the Zoom platform and livestreamed on Cohasset 143 TV and Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the Chair. Board meeting, board members will be able to ask questions of any participant. All votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to raise their virtual hands on Zoom and at the discretion of the Chair will be promoted into the meeting. Members must provide and and people who wish to speak must provide their full name and address for the public record. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143. I'm going to, you know, call the roll. Corey?
Corey Evans, aye, here.
Paul? You're muted, Paul.
Paul Grady is present.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy here.
Gene?
Gene Healy-Dippel here.
Jack Creighton, I'm obviously here. We customarily start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and you can use a flag, you know, right there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all. Okay, as is our custom, we start all of our meetings with a public comment, and that's for any member of the public. The rules are you can speak briefly to any subject concerning the town that you wished. However, there will be no discussion. There will be no further discussion on the agenda. The board at its discretion made it decide to take up the matter at a later hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak? Tracy, are we seeing anybody in the waiting room?
I do not see anybody with their hand up.
All right. Okay, moving forward, setting the date for the special town meeting, December 12th, 2022. Chris, can you give us the details?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The recommendation is to set December 12th as the special time meeting day. It's the same week we did it last year. We've confirmed the moderator, we have confirmed council, we've confirmed the school. So we're all set. And this will allow enough time to wrap, to have a good conversation and have things wrapped up at the beginning of November.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Is there any discussion from the board members? Diane? You're muted, Diane.
Yeah, thanks, sorry. Chris, could you just say what date the, any warrant articles are due and when the warrant would need to be printed or approximately, just so people listening can understand that?
Based on the schedule that's been proposed, which will publish tomorrow, it would be the Select Board, we will send out the notice of intent to all the boards committees internally tomorrow. So any internal boarding committee that has something they want to put on the warrant, or at least for consistency, I should say, we'll get that together shortly. The Select Board will then open the warrant's next official meeting, which is September 13th. That would allow a week for citizen petitions, and then the warrant would officially close on the 20th. That's how it works under the bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Chris. If somebody wants to, citizens want to place their own article on the warrant, how would they do that, Chris?
They would gather 100 valid, they'd have to describe the article and there's a form on the website. And they would then have to gather 100 signatures for a special town meeting that are validated by the clerk. And then that would be officially, and then, and they'd have to have an end by the date of the warrant closure. The Select Board opens it on the 13th, it's the 20th would be the date, you know.
Okay. Okay. Jane?
And Chris, is there a particular day on which we're making town council available for citizens that want to file any petitions? We, I know historically done that, and I think that's helpful.
Probably try to do it that weekend, the week after Labor Day, Jane, when people are definitely back. And if I've been, I'll post that public information on some of my social media pages. Probably do it virtually, if we can, last.
Yep, okay.
Any other comments? Chair would entertain a motion to set the date for the special town meeting at December 12th, 2022.
Some would.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion made and seconded to set the town meeting date for December 12th, 2022. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we call the vote. Gene?
Gene Healy-Dippel, aye.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul?
Paul Grady, aye.
Corey?
Corey Evans, aye.
Okay. Motion is made and carried, okay. Board committee appointment, Community Preservation Committee. One of their reps is from the Planning Board. The Planning Board has asked Chris Peck to be their nominee as her discussion, and by the way, the information is in your packet. And it was put on the town website. Is there any discussion about Chris? Is Chris here by any chance? Okay. So any discussion about Chris? Chair would entertain a motion.
I move to appoint Chris Pluck to the CPC, to the Community Preservation Committee.
I second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to appoint Chris Pluck as the Planning Representative to the CPC, Community Preservation. Is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I call the, call the vote. Diane?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Jane?
Gene Healy-Dippel, aye.
Paul?
Paul Grady, aye.
Corey?
Corey Evans, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye. Congratulations, Chris, and thank you for agreeing to serve. Okay, moving beyond that, Select Board on our, we want to go over our fiscal year 23 goals. First thing is an update on the Financial Long-Term Planning Update. Open Meeting Law Discussion and the Vote on the Subgroup. This is a somewhat informal, but because it has town business, it has been conducted, all the meetings under the terms of the Open Meeting Law. We have council's opinion on that. So the town's perfectly, the way it's been running is just fine. That legal opinion has been put on the town website, it's been distributed to the Select Board. Right now, we have a situation where, you know, originally, there were like Chair and Vice Chair of a number of different committees. Some have been, had a difficult time doing that. So the idea is that perhaps we want to name exactly who's going to be on it. And the reason is that if we have a large group and people don't show up, then we don't have a quorum and they cannot conduct business. So, you know, there's been a lot of discussion on that and, you know, one solution is, and I don't think we're going to be voting tonight. We could if you wanted to, but I don't think we're going to be voting tonight on the actual participants. But I think we want to discuss if we're recording is back in progress again, that's good. Gene's also done a lot of work on this. So Gene, do you want to kind of flesh out what we're trying to do here?
Sure, I'm happy to give an update. So just to put a little context for what Jack was just saying. So we do have some members that do want to participate, but they have a conflict. So for example, Mr. Girardi has requested that another Water Commissioner go in his stead because he has an ongoing conflict with the Monday night. And so we would like to accommodate him. So that's one example of where, you know, there, I think it would be appropriate to make a change in the subgroup composition. Likewise, Advisory has requested a particular individual, Mr. Barclay, join instead of Ms. McGoldrick, who is the Vice Chair. And so, again, like to accommodate them on that request. And so, some of this is frankly just scheduling issue. But where we are substantively is that the group did meet on, and I should be precise, certain members of the group met last month, so not yesterday, but the prior Monday. And we did not have enough folks present to open a meeting. Capital did, they opened a meeting. And we were their guests. And we had a discussion about various topics relating, for example, to how best to move forward on the financial planning generally, in terms of the various issues that we were looking at, ranging from really focusing on the capital projects that are before us and considering whether we had the right list. I'm providing updates to folks on some capital projects that may or may not be feasible. For example, updating on the brick grant and that the town didn't receive that brick grant with respect to the microgrid. Talking about the timing for MSBA, which we're hopeful we'll get some feedback from them in September. Although the fall, you know, maybe that might be too optimistic, again, to give us some guidance on where we may fall with respect to that. And then we gave ourselves some homework after sort of reviewing the shortlist of projects and talking about whether we think that we, you know, had sort of sufficiently lined up the foreseeable projects in the next three to five years. Whether we thought, what the next step should be, I suggested one thing that I think this, the Select Board is interested in is a recommendation as to the charge. If we're going to charge a committee more formally, the members that were present, including Advisory and Capital, do not feel comfortable doing that yet. And I think we thought that we needed some more baseline information to move forward with a charge that would be, allow the group to be both efficient yet comprehensive. And so we have tentatively planned among ourselves to meet September 12th again, just because of August and schools starting and vacations, scheduling was difficult in the interim. But various members took back homework to get more information, particularly on the operational side and the budgetary impacts we may be looking at over the next three years. So for example, the schools, the town side, really trying to get more details and flesh that out for consideration of, you know, where are we and what, if anything, do we need to do there? And how does this fit into the bigger picture? And so, like I said, people divided up by various homework assignments, including trying to figure out, for example, what is our debt capacity, given where the market is right now from a practical standpoint? And our capacity may be significant. We may be able, for example, to borrow hundreds of millions of dollars, but should we? Should we? Is that a wise thing for us as a town to do, particularly if our core principle is to ensure financial stability and not jeopardize our AAA rating? And so there are things that we want to do on that front, that we want to really, I think, again, gather some more baseline information to figure out what the charge should be. That's the sentiment of those who attended the last meeting. But because it's such a large group, there are scheduling difficulties. And I think one other option could be that we reduce the group size. Because I know that previously, at the July 17th meeting, the vote was for Chair and Vice Chair of all these different committees, but trying to get everyone assembled. It is just challenging, just because of the size of the group. So that's what we're looking at in terms of trying to figure out logistics and moving forward.
Right. And for those people at home, to just kind of put this in perspective, just as you and your home budget will be projecting long-term costs, the town, this is the town doing that to say, are we going to need schools? Are we going to need things like the Town Hall, Police and Fire? If we are, what are they going to cost? How are we going to pay for them? How much tax revenue? We borrow some money, we can have bonds. How many bonds are we going to issue to pay for all of this? So this is just basic planning. And one of the things that I think we're probably going to do as we go forward with this is the charge for people who aren't, you know, in this kind of political world, a charge is, description of what it is, the Select Board will ask this community to do. So they're going to fine tune that, and I am on that, by the way. Fine tune that so people can understand that. We're also probably going to have all the meetings on Zoom. It's very nice to meet in person. However, when you don't have Zoom, it's very difficult to get a quorum. And also, the public at large finds it easier to follow these things if they can do it on Zoom from at home. So we're probably going to be going, you know, forward on that. I thought for the benefit of the board, I would, you know, list of who is on the tentative Board at this time. The Craig McClellan, who's Chair of the School Committee. Lance Dial, who's Vice Chair. I'm on it as Chair of Select Board. Gene is on it as Vice Chair. Rob Hillman, he's Chair of Advisory. Mike Barclay, who's also an Advisory. Brian Host, who's Chair of the Capital Budget Committee. Mike Dick, who's a facilitator and a Vice Chair of the Capital Budget Committee. And we also have kind of ex officio, which means they will be hopefully attending, but they're not voting members, and that would be Chris Senior, Town Manager, Michelle Leary, Assistant Town Manager, and Justin Shereer, Town Communications. So that's the list that we're looking at right now. So.
Sorry to interrupt. We also have Steve Girardi.
And Steve Girardi, isn't Chris Pratt taking for Steve?
Well, that, that's the request, yes.
Right, right. So we would have Chris Pratt, I'm sorry, for the Water Commissioner. We've invited Sewer and Sewer and their Chair and Vice Chair have not shown up. So we don't know where they're going to do. Anyway, that's kind of the overview, comments from the Select Board. Paul?
Now is there room for any more, if someone say wants to join from one of the other committees? Or is that going to be a closed circle?
I think it depends. I mean, it has not been formally set up at that number. I think probably, do you have a suggestion?
I do. I'm going to hold off until I get a response. I would say that some interest generated, but I will bring it to the attention of, you know, the board and everybody else.
Okay, yeah.
They were interested, so I'm just wanting confirmation, so I don't want to go right up there.
Yeah, I think there is, there is a sense that it's still fluid, but we do want to get to a working board. And we, of course, I guess, could, you know, approve these people and also say, and we have the right for the ability to hire more. One of the things, it's helpful for people to understand that when you have an advisory committee that reports to the Select Board, it isn't like a voted position that's in the bylaws, like a planning or conservation. These are committees that exist at the pleasure of the Select Board and can be changed at any time at the pleasure of the Select Board. So they're really very fluid. And their purpose is, as we try to do our job on the Select Board, we say, hey, we need somebody to give us some advice. So that's why they're called advisory committees. So they're not nearly as rigid. We can change them. They're flexible. The, so anyway, that's what it is. Anyway, other questions? I see Diane.
Yeah, just. My yellow hand. I'm jaundiced. No, just to bring some of my government governance geekness to this discussion. I mean, one of the challenges, this, this committee kind of existed a number of years ago in pretty much the same form and had trouble making quorums. And then it became more of a working group. One of the big challenges with the Capital A Advisory Committee is they're prohibited from serving on other town committees. And, and because ultimately, they're the ones that are, you know, supposed to be sort of Switzerland in terms of making recommendations. And working groups are typically born of the staff, you know, at the direction of, of the Select Board, making recommendations on, on the kinds of things that they need. So I guess what I would hope is maybe after another meeting, there'd be some recommendation back to us in terms of whether this is going to function as a working group and work primarily with staff. Hopefully, we'll have a Finance Director who can take the lead on it so that, you know, the, the group that ultimately convenes and helps identify work product to get us to some of these, these policy discussions will be, you know, managed internally. So I guess that's, you know, just cautionary on the Advisory Committee, not being able to be like sworn into another committee, which, you know, so, and also the quorum piece, which makes it complicated. So I just look forward to a recommendation and, you know, very much look forward to hopefully a Finance Director to carry this forward.
On the, yeah, on the quorum piece, anytime you, and on the organizational, this is always meant to be very informal and not to be a formally constituted committee like the Planning Board, yes, or the Conservation Commission. The Open Meeting Law comes in because whenever you have a group of people who are active in there, the state really kind of regards that as de facto engaging in governmental deliberation. So that's why, from the very first, we always handled it under Open Meeting Law requirements. But there's, we're trying to find the balance between what you're talking about and being overly legalistic and what we wish to have, which is a, you know, an effective, flexible working group. And Gene, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, it's my hope that the committee is trending in that direction, is sort of like self-select what might be that process. And Advisory has been, I think, helpful in wanting to weigh in. And so, you know, one idea there is with whatever the recommendation is in terms of, quote, formally moving forward, that they might be a liaison to the group, like they're a liaison to other projects to, you know, have that input, but, you know, appreciating what their bylaws are. And I think to Jack's point, and this is where I think maybe some of the confusion with you, Corey, arose, which is even though there was the suggestion not to make it formal and follow the formal requirements, we nonetheless did that, including posting agendas, posting, having only public meetings, only deliberating through a quorum publicly, so we were not violating Open Meeting Law. And that's what the Town Council's opinion, in fact, confirms. And, you know, people can read that online. And so we did have all of those requirements. And, you know, quite frankly, Town Council's opinion, I think, is pretty clear that if you, for example, have the Select Board members meeting with the Sewer Commissioner about regional sewer, that means you got to post that online. You got to have those meetings publicly available. And I think that's the result, frankly, of the Town Council's opinion. And I think, I think it's a good thing that we went out and got that. And I'm looking forward to putting some more formality around, I think, some of these maybe informal communications we've been having that probably need to be, you know, brought up, particularly where the Select Board is directing representatives to go off and do stuff. So in any event, the bottom line, though, is we want a functioning committee or subgroup. You can call it whatever you want, whether it's a working group, subgroup, committee, it still is the same function under the law. You can call it whatever you want, whether it's a working group, subgroup, committee, it still is the same function under the law. At the end of the day. And. We still need to comply with open meeting law and we still need to make sure we have a quorum. And so. I think. I'm happy to let Corey talk, but I'm ready to make a motion that I think will help effectuate that.
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the whole idea is, you know, it's time to start moving things forward. Make sure that we are in compliance, but not get bogged down in overly legalistic posturing back and forth. We have some serious long-term problems in this town, and I think, you know, we're committed to moving forward. Corey?
Yeah, I, I just, I.
Mike Dick has also raised his, his hand.
Okay, yeah, I just, I, I don't quite agree with, with my colleagues. Summary of, of town council's opinion on this. I do think it was, you know, pretty clear that. You know, what's going on does obviously fall under the open meeting law. And it, it did say that it probably may be prudent for the select board to formally appoint the working group. I think that that was an important sentence to not forget about. But one thing that I, and again, I'm not, as I said last meeting, the, the allergy. To just adopting a document here still be lies, understanding. The idea, for some reason, we just don't want to be formal. It's easy, right? How many questions do we have? Who's going to be on the committee? How many people are there? How do we have a quorum? How do you vote minutes? You can't do this without appointed members of a board. We could make a simple, the charge would be simple. Financial planning working group, five members, and they can invite whoever they want. And that's the whole thing. And we don't even have to tell them what to do yet, to Jack's point. We can solve all these problems by just putting a chart together, and the town would know, okay, this is what this committee is. This is what they're going to do. We don't have to be so specific. We don't have to overly legalize, it's been said, but that way you can have meetings. I mean, you can have bits, you can have votes. Right now, you can't have votes because you don't have members, right? You can't have a quorum because, you know, there were fifteen people, and now there's four. The last meeting had, what, five? I think it was just Jean. I think Jack made it. So like. How exactly do, does this committee operate? It's just amorphous. So I'm going to encourage the board to at least. Do a very simple charge or a very simple description, a couple of appointments. That way the board, the, the group can do its work. The only goal for me is that the board can do its work. Thank you.
I see Jane and then. Jane, you had your.
Yeah, so. I don't disagree with you, Corey, about wanting to have. A committee that moves forward. And in fact. At the July, early July meeting, when Jack suggested we put more formality around it. If I recall correctly, at minute thirty-eight, you and Diane suggested otherwise and said this should be informal. And you should have a discussion among the chair, vice chairs, et cetera, to figure out what the recommendation should be. So we literally had one meeting to do that. And. We haven't had another meeting of the full group since. And when I posed. To those who were there at the previous meeting, is there any sort of charge that we should recommend? Their answer was they wanted more time. That said. I'm perfectly content. With, and I'm going to do so now, making a motion to appoint. Various members, namely. The chair and vice chair of the select board, the chair and vice chair of capital. The chair and vice chair of the school committee. Mr. Pratt from the Water Commission. And have advisory, namely, Mr. Hillman and Mr. Barclay serve as liaisons to. A financial planning committee. That supports the select board's long-term financial planning goals. And that is their charge. And then we can move forward from there.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
You got a motion made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I, I just have one question. I just have one question about whether it's prudent to include somebody, a representative from sewer, and we can make that. That appointment later, only because that has such a huge capital impact on everything.
Yeah, thank you, Diane. Paul?
I just have room for one more question for Jean. There is room for at least another person to serve their discussion.
But, yeah, my, my only concern with making it big right now is that it makes it difficult to get a quorum. So I would, I think. You know, if there's someone you have in mind, we should make sure that person is willing and able and ready to commit. And, you know, we should.
I'll have it. I'd know about that tomorrow. I'm just saying, I just wanted to say there was some room. I'd like to second your motion, which I did.
And on the sewer, I guess Diane, if you want me to amend my motion, I mean. We haven't had anyone from sewer show up, so I'm a little bit, and I totally take your point and agree with you. I'm just reluctant to expand the committee. Beyond the, i- if, you know, we keep having. More appearances, that, that's my only concern.
You know, and I think. It, it just seems like. What happens in the sewer world impacts roads and sidewalks and. So I, and I, but I appreciate the size of the committee too, and I, and also just in general. This, this really, I think. Based on the two meetings that's, that have taken place and the, the direction that we want. This conversation to go in terms of long-range financial planning and capital. You know, there is, should be, and they're all public meetings, thus the, the, this motion to structure this in such a way where. You know, anybody can actually join and participate and, and we can certainly amend membership at any point too. I, I think it's more important to just move, move this forward in as structured, but as loose a way as we can. Because we, you don't, we don't really have a formal charge other than to serve at the pleasure of the select board. But, you know, when we make appointments, people do get sworn in and there is a process. And so I think as long as we recognize that. We can do what we can do tonight and then, you know. Work and tweak as we go forward.
We could certainly, you know, Jean can certainly add, and the select board may increase.
Yeah, we can change it later on, including if. You know, we can get, if we can get ahold of someone from, if, you know, there's a scheduling conflict, we can slot someone in instead. But in order to ensure that we meet quorum requirements, I think we probably need to.
Yes, but it's very clear that we at any time can do anything we want with this committee, as long as we post. That it's on our select board agenda. So Diane, what you're saying, and I agree with you, by the way, I have reached out to sewer as well, because I, I agree with that. So if, if, and to Paul's point, if there's somebody else who is interested. Just bring it to the board. We can discuss it and add it. And that way we don't create the, the quorum until we actually have somebody who's going to serve. Is that?
Now we have a motion.
There's a motion. The only thing I'd like clarification on is the exact title of, of the committee.
What would you like to? Well, I think we just called the, what we've been calling it before. I think we want to differentiate from the committee that had. Existed in the past merely because some of their work that they, their work product surfaces, and we want to make sure they don't get. Confused. So Diane, what was exactly the name of that? Was that also the long-term planning or?
I think it was called Long Range Planning. Group, LR, or group, yeah, L R P G.
All right, well, why don't we just call it the Long Range Financial Planning Group? Is that okay?
Let's just call it the Cohasset Financial Planning Committee. Keep it simple.
All right, is that okay? So we've had a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Corey?
Corey?
Yep, so I'm glad we're making progress. I do want to point out that. A few weeks ago, when the question of the sidewalk committee charge was pointed out to me that wasn't submitted in time to the, to make the pack, and we couldn't discuss it. So in this context, we don't have anything in the packet of a charge, which so I'm surprised we're going to discuss it. However, the remedy, which I would recommend. If it's okay, is if member Healy would do a share screen, and we could just live edit a word document. And then we could have a, a piece of working document that we can just say, yep, this is what we agreed to, because we've kind of been going back and forth verbally. And I want to be sure that we have a clean document that we have adopted.
We have a motion. On the floor and seconded to create this committee. We've had some discussion. That's the motion that's on the floor. Further discussion on that, Diane?
No, I, I mean, just, just to go to Corey's point, I mean, we're doing it to, to appoint somebody to a committee. You know, we should have properly noticed, you know, a, a committee name and a charge. And I think to, I think we can make that correction right now. Maybe you can't appoint somebody to a committee that hasn't been. Formally charged and defined by the select board. So I think we can, you know, because the motion was to appoint these people to a commit, to the committee. I, I think we probably should first. Make the committee. And then make the appointments.
Uh, Jean, that's your motion?
Yeah, my motion was to. Re the committee. And to appoint, and the, like, we've been talking about the committee name, Cohasset's Financial Planning Committee. Which is a subcommittee of the select board. The people. Who we're appointing are the chair and vice chairs of capital. The select board, the school committee. Mr. Pratt from the Water Commission. With Mr. Hillman and Mr. Barclay from advisory as liaisons. And Mr. Senior and Ms. Leary as ex officio members, non-voting ex officio members. And I think we can change the composition if we get some participation from sewer or another. Member of an interested committee, Mr. Grady, if we want to discuss that further, because I know you want to talk that through a little more. But for now, I think to move forward. Let's start with that. And I think we can talk about a charge, but what I would caution is, I don't want to be overly legalistic about it, because we did talk. With this group about the charge, and I think maintaining some flexibility is important, including to have the group. What they wanted to do, I think, was come back with some specificity, and this is precluding that a little bit. But as long as it's sufficiently general, I feel okay about it. I just want to enable them to do their work. To help us reach our goal.
Paul?
So, Jean, are you making the motion?
Yes, that was my motion to. We've created, point a committee that already exists called the Cohasset Financial Planning Committee. With, again, to be clear, Tracy for the minutes, chair and vice chair of the select board of the school committee of capital budget. With liaisons of Mr. Hillman from advisory, Mr. Barclay from advisory. We also want Mr. Pratt on the committee from the Water Commission and ex officio Ms. Leary. Our assistant town manager, Mr. Senior, our town manager, both of whom would be non-voting members because they're staff.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Is there further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I call for the vote roll call. Corey?
Without a document, I can't vote to approve something.
Diane?
I'm abstaining.
Paul?
I.
Jane?
Hi.
Jack Grayton, I, motion carries. Thank you. I think what we would probably want is the, we will hear back from this group as to if. Some of the questions on that, but I think we're, we're moving slowly, and I think we're getting some progress. And it's a very, very group of people, so.
Yeah, I'm prepared to interrupt. I know Mr. Dick was in the audience with his hand up, and I would like to move. To. Charge the committee, which, again, ironically, is just meant to address Mr. Evans's concern. But. He appears unwilling to vote on it regardless, so it may be a pointless motion. At the end.
One of her, that's a claim that you cannot back up, and it's not true.
Okay, so I will move to charge the committee to engage in financial planning as to Cohasset's. Long-term capital needs, operational needs, as well as our. Long-term debt capacity and our demographic information, all of which will serve to form the basis of. Recommendations that we ask the committee to make to the select board relating to. Those issues.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded. Is there a discussion? Corey, is that your old hand or new hand?
No, it's new head. I mean, my only request, as before, was to just have something on the screen with text. I'd love to vote for that, because then it's, you know, everyone can see it, the public can see it. It's easy. That's the remedy here. So I appreciate the phrasing. I support the phrasing.
Is it? Is there other discussion on there?
The motion is made, seconded, we're going to vote.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Call the vote. Jane?
Jane Hilli dipple down.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul?
Well, Grady, I.
Corey?
For your heavens eye.
Jack Grayton, I, thank you. So we all work together and we all throw our little things into there, but I think we have a pretty good work product here. And I think we're set the stage for a very important advisory thing and. Nice to see a select board that's really doing their job and moving this wonderful town of ours forward. Going forward, forward. Zoning bylaw committee update. The. They met on Monday. They've had some very good meetings. You know, Paul Grady is participating. On that zoning bylaw, he's, I am on that committee, but with all the other. Committees and subcommittees that I'm on, it's hard for me to be at every meeting, so Paul is, will be. Available and moving forward. On that. They were getting very good response from our town council. And in particular, Judge Cutler, who was, who is a KP law. Our town council, she was also former chief justice of the land court. And they will be providing the zoning bylaw committee with, in mid-September. With a, a action plan. And there's two basic things. There are some what we might, and I'm oversimplifying. There's some housekeeping things in which you might have a clause in one paragraph. It should be a clause in another. Paragraph and something that may contradict with an archaic phraseology. So that will be done. And then there are some more. Not tactical, they're strategic, or there are things like, what do you do with the, what's called the single lot exemption? Which allows a lot that's in existence that doesn't meet current zoning to be built on. That's been a, a very large. Bone of contention, if you will. The Supreme Judicial Court, my understanding is, has since ruled that. Once you have the right to do that, the town can't take that away. So that would probably simplify. And take a lot of the animosity out of some of the discussions. Anyway, this is a pretty important committee. It's very legalistic. They're working very hard. We're fortunate to have a very high-quality law firm working for us. With one of the top legal figures in the state, a former chief justice of the. With one of the top legal figures in the state, a former Chief Justice of the Land Court. So we're moving forward with that. We expect it probably. Uh, it will go before the town in. The spring, it's probably not feasible. To have it done. By the fall town meeting, there has been some discussion that this may rise to a situation where. They may decide to call a special town meeting just to address this issues. That hasn't been decided, but I think the select board and the town should be aware that that is being discussed. So they're working very hard. Some of the people who were active before. Uh, zoning are not on the committee, but they're essentially a council, they're reviewing. Uh, and doing some work, Dave McMorris. Woody Chidick are not on the zoning by law, but they're providing work product. I know Will. Woody just sent a very good analysis of some of the. Uh, issues from the zoning board, zoning board of appeals, so things are going along well, and that's basically all that's going on. Any questions on that? Jean?
Um, one thing that the group discussed during our early August meeting, which I think is almost as important as the. Legal revisions is the communications plan. And really having a good plan for outbound communications. Um, including working with Justin, getting some topics that and then. Doing not just forums, but also real proactive outreach to people through social media, through mailing. Um, and other ways to really engage people. And so I'm wondering. Um, is the committee going to have a plan? Um, are they are they working towards that plan? I know it's summer, so it's tricky, so I get that, but I, you know, are. Given what we're trying to accomplish, it probably makes sense to have a more formal communications plan at. In the near future and early fall sometime.
I I agree, um, and 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 it is, they've discussed it frequently, they certainly know the importance of that. And one of the reasons why Paul. Will, one of his roles will be to assist that. Uh, in a little bit, but no, they're very aware of that. We're very aware, we've worked with Justin. That there needs to be outreach, and one of the things is to make sure that information is put forth. That. So we're discussions is based on facts, not. Non facts, not claims that aren't aren't so, not things that won't happen. So that's very true, but that's a good point, and and I they're working very, very hard on that. There any other questions on zoning? Okay, roads and sidewalks, Jean, I mean, we've all gotten all that information. You know, we we know, we got. A list of the paving projects. Any comments from the board? Diane?
Um, I just wondered, going through the minutes from that are at the end of our agenda, that one of the things we did discuss was charging a sidewalk committee. You know, where that stands and, you know, I'm happy to volunteer for any assistance. I'm actually only on Affordable Housing Trust. There's a lot of big projects in town that are going forward that I'm not involved with, and I would like to be involved in something substantive. I know, I think Corey was going to take up the sidewalk charge, but basically just wondering where that stands. And, you know, what our next steps are going beyond the, I think, the Brian Joyce issued. Uh, road paving product schedule that we got in our packets, which was great. So thanks for that.
Yeah, Jack, I can provide a brief update on that if you will.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
So we did, we did ask Brian to follow up on the sidewalks with the road consultant that did the. Um, the survey that everyone has and. We haven't gotten that yet. Uh, well, let me back up. The the consultant came in at forty seven thousand dollars. To review our sidewalks, because what the consultant is looking for. Is not just what sidewalks are terrible, but. But different. With fee condition, right, to do what is here in this road paving plan. And so what Jack and I have asked Chris Senior to do. And delegate to. Whoever he needs to is to see what work we can do internally on our own, because the consultant came back with a forty seven thousand dollar. Um, price tag for that, and so we're waiting for Brian Joyce, who has started that work to finish that work. And then once we have that baseline of information, the question is. Do we, what do we, what additional do we need? Or can we as a board actually start making decisions to actually start implementing and getting work done? We you see a lot of these sidewalk committees, if you look at the other charges in other towns. They're doing that survey work that we are hopeful we can do internally, and then it just becomes a political issue of. Who gets what done on what schedule? And so that's the issue I put out to the group in terms of. If we do a sidewalk committee, which I have mixed feelings about, that probably just prolonged us getting the work done, to be candid.
Paul?
I'm just more concerned notes, address this to Jean. Jean, that we're looking at every sidewalk in Cohasset. That's what Brian Joyce is supposed to be coming up with, right? Not just ones on the paving schedule, I'm working, I'm thinking about through the road. We all know the hot button items like Beechwood, very important, we all know, but the ones that are falling apart. Is he going to be examining every sidewalk in Cohasset and also? Looking for room for improvement like we talked about, just hypothetically speaking, a walking lane from around the ledge down above. Rocky Beach from Jerusalem, connecting that sidewalk that currently exists, but is falling into the pavement. But we know we can't blast ledge, let's say a walking lane around that. Is he going to be looking at improvements? Are we just going to get a plain plain black and white? With nineteen streets that have been prioritized. I think it's important that we visit every road and sidewalk, and that's what we prioritize.
So listen, I think the board can direct Chris to do what we like. Right now, we have asked him to survey existing sidewalks. To start there, because we have them. Um, so we're starting there and we're waiting for that work product.
Diane?
I think Corey was before me.
Oh, Corey?
Yeah, just to answer Dan's question, yeah, there was. In the twenty sixth packet, and I got that in only a couple hours for the meeting. There was a draft of the sidewalk study committee and and we didn't, the board declined to to discuss it, but. I mean, I think what I mean, Paul, to to Paul's point and what we talked, you know, what happened on Facebook, right, where someone got injured, right? This is why, but this is one of the things a committee can do is really take a look at everything, right? And and I I don't think that, you know, just as having Brian Joyce say, as to Paul's point, like, oh, here's a list of stuff. That's not what we want. What we want here is. A path forward and a place where residents can go and say, yes, this is a problem. We need it. We need a space for residents to have input. We need residents to direct this process. I don't think it should be a political one. I think it should be, you know, people, members of a committee that do their job, and we can put a timeline out, but it's going to be. I mean, I I'd love the idea of getting nine people together that are dedicated to fixing our sidewalk problem. Letting them go to do their work, giving them information, and then hearing back from them what they think we should do. I think that's just so powerful. And I think it'd be a great message to the town if we say we are charging a sidewalk committee, we are doing the study, we're going to have a report in six months. And we're going to do it. I think that's really powerful.
Diane?
Yeah, ju- jumping off of that, I mean, I think to to Paul's point, I mean, there's there's the. Sidewalks that exist that are in really bad condition, and then there's new sidewalks or needs for additional sidewalks that, I mean. I I didn't know of some certain needs that have been brought up in the last couple of months, like, because they're they're not, you know, most people know what's in their neighborhood, and I think when we initially talked about this. This was kind of what we wanted to to do was analyze the current conditions and what it would take to bring them. Now, the problem is. You open, you know, you open up a road, you open up a sidewalk, all of a sudden you're talking millions, millions of dollars because you got to bring everything up to code. I mean, I walk on Beechwood once in a while, and that's a perfect example. It's like if you even touch it. But I think as as much as the forty seven thousand dollars is a big chunk of money, I definitely would like us to have that conversation. About having a professional because it's impossible for Brian Joyce. He's just trying to maintain. You know, the programs and departments that he oversees, but we really do need to to look at this holistically, and maybe the sidewalk committee is. Once we have some raw data to work with, where are, and you know, some public forums, where are the needs? For both repair and potentially new walking biking lanes, all that kind of stuff, and then how does that overlay into some of the capital? Planning for roads that are already being planned to be opened and sewer projects, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, it's pretty holistic and it's. A lot of this stuff is not stuff that a committee can do. Or even any member of the staff, and I think we have to have that hard conversation about whether that's some an an effort we want to invest in, and I'm. One of those people that would say the answer is yes.
Jane?
So just to be clear, what tech consultants quoted us for was just existing sidewalks. They're not recommending new, again, it's just the existing sidewalks. And it would likely look like the road survey that we got. You know, that said, I don't necessarily disagree that. We want a professional in there to get it done. I think. I think my my only concern with the committee is I think six months is too long. I think we need to fix the problem much sooner than that, and this is why I'm pushing to see. What we can get done internally, and when I say problem, when you start. What when doing this sort of planning and making these decisions, we need to, we need to give people notice a year out, so we can't even, if we're waiting six months. Then we're already behind the eight ball, and so for me, I would like to get results a lot more quickly, including getting the money to actually get this done. Um, you know, you start opening this up, so to speak, this is going to be millions upon millions of dollars and. People need to have an awareness of that. I think figuring out, we we all know what sidewalks are terrible, like, we see this, you can read one four three, you can read, you can walk. This is, this is not like a huge mystery, Beechwood. The North Main Street sidewalks, the South Main Street sidewalks, like the Elm Street sidewalks, they're. Real issues all over the place. The question is, how much does it cost? And I think what schedule? And so. I'm open to suggestions on getting us to those answers more quickly, so we can actually start the fixes more quickly, and so that's sort of where I am.
Diane, uh, Diane, and then Paul?
Yeah, no, and I I I totally agree with that. I I think the one thing that we have. Talked about in the last couple of months that I think we need to find a way to publicly. Talk about with others is where there are needs that may not be on our radar. Um, because I I just think we owe that to the to the community. Get, I mean, I'm still getting calls from. The King Street, you know, because that was brought up and it was something that, you know, you're driving down there, I drove down and I'm like, wow, you know, we. This really does need to be under consideration. I want to do right by the people that I think think that we're going to have these conversations, and I think we should.
Corey and then Paul?
On the timing aspect, I mean, like, if if this is. Obviously, you we want to, we all want to do stuff quickly, but there is a schedule which we kind of don't control, which is the town meeting schedule. So a six month window, even if it was seven months, lands us in. What, like February, which means we're totally queued up for any type of money that we need to do for annual town meeting. So the six months, it's not arbitrary.
You have to give residents a year notice before you begin cutting up and paving the sidewalk is my concern.
No, I know that, but I we're just talking about funding mechanisms and discussion, so if you want to get stuff done quickly, then we can make a plan. And have something ready for funding to go forward, and then obviously the mechanics of paving a street are complicated or adding sidewalks, all that kind of stuff, but. The stage of how do we determine what streets to do? How much money should they be if we have a six month window? We're perfectly re- ready for annual town meeting next year, which is really the fastest we can get this done anyway.
Well? I disagree with that. Could we get a list of sidewalks from Joyce and his company? Could we get a list of what we have for existing sidewalks?
I mean, we asked for that, we expected it on Friday. Want, it wasn't forthcoming, you know, our hope was to get it to everyone so we could advance the conversation. Um, we didn't get it, and so.
Touch with Mr. Joyce, get a list of existing sidewalks in Cohasset, we can get that as soon as possible, and maybe a timeline on that, like next week.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect that by September thirteenth.
In a car, driving around Cohasset, looking at existing sidewalks, making note of the conditions, coming up with a report. Then you can have that next five people in the next week, going around, looking at the aforementioned Jerusalem Road, seeing what would be safe to go around there. Presenting it, we could put that up on the Newtown webpage when that comes up in September, which I'm still extremely confident of, and let the town start chiming in.
Yeah, I mean, one thing. I would ask our fellow select board members, and I'm had, and I will certainly do this myself, as we think through all this is. We should let Brian know so he can keep a compri- or Michelle, Michelle or Brian know. Where people are asking for, you know, or pointing out an issue. Um, so he can add that to the list of sidewalk repairs that are necessary. Another aspect of this too was that we are supposed to be getting this CRM system. Hopefully rolled out through our website in September. Which will afford residents the opportunity to flag specific areas of sidewalks that need to be addressed. Um, including on a pretty timely basis, and so. I think that. You know, that's just sort of where we are right now and. Um, again, our hope was to advance a lot of this work on like sort of the technical and survey data. By this meeting, but we just, we didn't get the necessary information in time.
Yeah, we did, it was not provided. Um, but I think we need to do that and decide what we're going to do if we move forward. Think the board should pretty much be aware that once you open. You know, the Pandora's box, we're going to find that a lot of people want sidewalks, and I drove along King Street. Very sparsely populated. No real cheap way to put sidewalks down. So what is the house per mile, per million dollars that a sidewalk is gonna? Going to cost, we're not like a a city where you have X amount of people for everything. So it is likely to be extremely expensive. And it's likely going to cause people to say if they have a sidewalk, I want a sidewalk in front of my house. Too, so I'm not arguing either way, but I think as we look at this, we should have a clear. Eye that this thing that we're opening is likely to to spending is going to be. Interesting, but anyway, Paul, you had your hand up?
Yes, so just back to my point, can we get a time? From Chris or Brian Joyce, when we can expect that report? And then we can start extrapolating the information from there, and we can go from there, and then it start expanding on it. But we were supposed to have that report, I understand, Chris, and it'd be nice to get it, so we can start moving on this. I mean, I don't think it's a lot of heavy lifting. But I do understand King Street and Beechwood, you're also, that's where you're going to get into heavy some lit, some heavy lifting, because you're looking at a taking. Usually in some properties, but we do have existing sidewalks, we do have places we can start. And then we look at the long range of a King Street, Beechwood that don't have them, that need them. Take each project as they come, but we do have to see the existing sidewalks report.
Why don't we, I think we're pretty much. This is one of the things like paving that we, we have a consensus among the board that we need to figure out some way to deal with it. But I think at this point. We don't have the information that that we had hoped to have for this meeting, so I would suggest that we put this off to the. Next select board meeting when we have that information, and I assume we'll be able to have that. Uh, Chris, I see your, you'd be able to get that by our next meeting?
What I wanted to clarify, Jack, is that the request has been for a plan to assess the sidewalks. The consultant came back with a plan that was, as Jamie pointed out earlier, it was quite expensive.
Yes.
Brian has been asked to come up with alternative ways of assessing the sidewalk.
Yes, exactly.
So and that and that's what he's in the process of figuring out, is what alternatives can we do in-house and expensive? I'm not sure there's going to be a good answer or a cheap answer. Um, and, um, and, you know, it's the end of August, I mean, so so plus Brian is a shorthanded administrator right now. And there's many active projects going on.
I know.
So I'm, again, I want, I want to put, again, I. So, so I'm, again, I want, I want to put, again, I appreciate Paul's intensity. That said, I can't just ask, uh, uh, Brian to drop everything else he's doing, to drive around this car and assess sidewalks. It's not, it's not how this works. And, and I don't mean that to be disrespectful, it's just that how it works. And I don't want Brian to be set up as he's somehow not responding when he most certainly is doing the best he can.
Yeah, well, no, I, that's why I put it off and, and I think a preliminary assessment, which would. Flesh out what you just suggested is the issues on that. But Paul.
Chris, I, I digress a little bit. I wasn't asking Brian Joyce really for anything, but we're asking, I'm asking for, do we have a list? I wasn't asking to drive around and assess sidewalks. Do we have, we were just talking about a committee. Do we have a list of existing sidewalks in Cohasset?
Yes, I'm fairly confident that the answer to that is yes.
All right.
I can't, I can't swear that it's in an Excel spreadsheet, but I think it is.
No, just let me finish. So we have that list. That's all we're asking for right now. I mean, I, as I said, Gene mentioned a committee, Corey mentioned it, Diane mentioned it. Uh, I think that maybe by some of us volunteering, getting into goodie, we can assess them ourselves and say, that looks like crap. Sorry, someone just broke their toe on that one. Sorry about that. Oh, Jesus Christ, a tree just fell across that one, better fix that. So that's my take on it. We don't need Brian Joyce really to be doing any of his own assessments. I'm sure he's busy, got things to do. But if we get a list of sidewalks, like we're waiting for the roads report. And get that and define timeline, I think we might be in better shape, we may take some of the ball into our own hands and get it, get it going.
I think it's a very creative approach, Paul, and I, I applaud you for that. And let me circle back when Brian comes back for vacation. Uh, to see if there's a way to make something like that work.
Well, what I would suggest is, um, that I think we all know that the sidewalks are, are an issue. Um, how we're going to proceed with that, I think we're not quite sure. We could, it appears to me that there's some additional data points and perspectives that we can get. From our highway department without overloading Brian, we, we're, you know, we're aware of that. And then we might have a little bit of a, more information to allow this, the, uh, the select board to. Figure out where we want to go from that. Is, is, are people comfortable with that? And we'll put it on the agenda. Chris, and if we, in two weeks, with Bri- with Brian or, or somebody at least to, to help us out a little on this.
Yeah, Michelle can circle out the road, she's going to circle out the sidewalk list, just like she circled the road, so you can all have that maybe tonight or tomorrow, probably tomorrow. And then we could, I could circle back when Brian's back next week about figuring out a way to start. And accelerating this and assessment. Now, the challenge, but what you all know is that very few of our sidewalks actually meet any real code. They, they're there, but they were laid down just to be polite and nice. Because the town made historically, no priority of sidewalks at all when development was done, not. So what we're stuck with is literally generations of decision-making that has to be addressed. So it's not as easy as just repairing stuff. I wish it was. The problem is that if you repair something too much, it comes, has to come up to full standards. And very few of our sidewalks actually meet modern ADA standards.
It's gonna be, it's, it's gonna, the mind, the cost is going to be mind boggling. Paul?
We've got to start someplace, Jack, so we can start at the beginning then.
All right, let's see, let's see if we get some more information out to us. We might end up having to do it. I don't know, and I want to prejudge it, but I, we can discuss it. Back and forth here, but we won't get any progress, but I think we need to do this. And by the way, as we all know, what we're seeing is on our goals, we keep coming back to the goals. And, and we're not giving up. So the fact that we haven't decided something. It's still on the agenda and it will be on the agenda in two weeks and we'll have a little bit more and we'll try to. Um, if everybody on the board could give it some thought, drive around, take a look at it. One thing that Chris would be very helpful, if we could get at least a ballpark, um, cost per mile. Of, of paving, I know that's kind of problematic, but at least we know, have some kind of ballpark that would be helpful. Does anybody else want to, uh, have a last minute opinion on this? I think we have a unanimous opinion and we don't know how we're going to get there, but at least, Jane?
Um, just for the board's edification, I did ask Mr. Joyce about King Street and the cost there. And it's 1.5 million is the estimate to do a new sidewalk, just to give you. And that doesn't include the money for takings, just to give you a sense of the price that we're talking about. I think we should direct Mr. Senior to get a proposal to us. No later than our next select board meeting, so we can have a decision point to move forward on in terms of. A list of sidewalks and what we want to do. Whether we want to hire tech consultants to move forward, spending money that we could be spending on sidewalks on a consultant. Or, um, if this is work that we can do internally, and if so, what's the timeline for it? Because we don't want to keep kicking the can down the road on this. And if the timeline is, we don't have the staff to get this done within the next six months, then maybe we do a citizens sidewalk committee. Even though, you know, whether we have enough people who have the, you know, the technical and engineering expertise and the ADA knowledge. Maybe we just.
That's a good point, the ADA knowledge. We have to be very careful in our governance not to encourage unrealistic. Um, things and or that, but I do think we need some clarification. And is everybody in favor of just asking Chris to have that report for us in the next meeting? Okay. You don't have to, you don't have to write the Magna Carta just to, Chris, but we would like.
Just to be clear, so this is existing sidewalks, right? And a plan to assess those statistics, that is doable. Or a plan to, not to have them assessed, but a plan to assess them, that, that's a doable.
And. Michelle Lary, our assistant town manager, just sounded something. So we already have that and length, square feet and width of all the existing sidewalks. She just, um, emailed it to the board. So Chris, we're already partially there to getting the report for two weeks. Congratulations.
Excellent. Look at that, we moved fast.
I've just, I just can't believe it. This is incredible. All right, anybody, uh, further discussions on this? And, and, and this is not, we're not tabling it, we're moving it to, you know, get this thing moving forward. All right. Fields and courts update. Chris, do we have any updates on the fields and courts?
I think where we left this, Jack, was we were going to ask. Chris and whether we want to formally do something or not, but we've asked Chris and Michelle to begin. Having discussions with the schools. Or not even necessarily the schools, but just looking at the third option that was presented in the field study report. That was a parcel of land out near Pond Street while kicking the tires in terms of what. Are the next steps we would need as a practical manner to move forward on some of these other options? For example, what would be the timeline for activity task? What would be the numbers? If, for example, we wanted to put something on the warrant, what would that look like? And so to begin trying to get some more concrete details on what the next steps would be. In terms of, uh, moving forward on some of those field options. And like I said, there is one option we didn't really consider, um. Too aggressively, but you know, given some of the other limitations of the other properties, that may be a place that we just want to understand more on. And again, that was the sort of unidentified large residential parcel, um, that's out there. Is that a fair summary, Chris?
Um, I, I think, um, I think as part of this, did you want us to circle back with like the rec commission and others to try to gauge their. Particular in, interest and support for various options of this, so we can come back with something that. Um, and, and some of the, you know, organizations that use the field so intensely, uh, to, to get a. Kind of a priority listing or should, should I say, uh, the beginning of a consensus, uh, that maybe this is where the town should go first.
Yeah, to do some of that work. Um, and, and Diane, I acknowledge that you suggested we might want to consider a field committee out there. Which, you know, I think, again. I think we can open the door to that, but having some more of sort of, some of the more technical details and background, including on timeline and bids. And money associated with that is, um. Is probably something that whether or not we do a committee, they're just going to need that, will need that, right?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, I, I, I am less interested in a committee for this purpose than. I am making sure we include the rec commission, um, you know, who does have so much oversight and, um, engagement with, with the fields. Plus, you know, the school key stakeholders. Um, and I really would love for us to have a. And I understand there's some private property that, you know, would preclude us from talking, um, in public session. But I do think it's important for the board to kind of get up to speed on what some of the options, you know, that we would be discussing with rec. Et cetera, because ultimately we're going to be the, um, advocates, if you will, in terms of finding funding and, and that kind of thing. So, um, another big agenda item for, for upcoming, uh, month.
Yeah, um, I want a quick comment to just, has rec given us an inventory of their fields? I haven't seen it, but I'm sure it is someplace. That's what I thought, beyond that. Okay, anyway, uh, Jean, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Diane, you reminded me of probably something near and dear to your heart. Um, one thing that if there's interest, we may, we may want to talk about at a future, um, select board meeting is. A naming policy. If, for example, that may be a way to address some of the funding, if there's interest on that front. That may be something that we want to consider in terms of if there's sort of a private, public partnership, we can effectuate. With some of these improvements that we're looking to do and that, you know, there may be citizens interested in that. There are some towns that have that, that have formal policies to. Um, I think encourage that.
So I, I think that's a great idea and I, in terms of revisiting the policies that we've had in the past with Barnes Field there. You know, that became an issue. And then subsequently, when we did the turf field, that was a public-private partnership. So that's probably a good place for us to spend some time talking as a, the policy board. Um, exactly where to, how to, how to go forward with that idea.
I just can't wait to see now, what is it, if it's going to be the Kennedy Field where Diane?
Certainly wouldn't be my Kennedy.
And Diane, just to clarify, do we have a naming policy?
I don't know, but I know that we, it was, it was an issue with, with the creation of Barnes Field. Um, so there might have been one then, and if its policy's still on the books, we need to either get rid of it or create a new one. But the place to start and then that public-private partnership, we didn't have, I mean, they, they sold bricks, if you will. For, for fundraising up at Alumni Field. So, um, when we, when we were doing the turf with the Cohasset Sports Partnership. All of that again is probably a, a great place to start.
Right. And Chris, you could probably research and find out if there is a town naming policy. That would be a big help. Thank you. Okay, um, fields and courts. The, I just want to throw this out, I don't know where it's gone, the senior center. The, this senior service league. May want to have a private pickleball court for the seniors. I gather there's room for it near the senior center and that would be on private land or whatever. And they are looking to see what might be done on pickleball for the rest of the town. But, and I don't know what they've done, but I just want people to be alert that they have considered it, whether they're going to go forward, I do not know. Do we have any other comments on fields and courts for this evening? Okay, communications website, um, Chris, where are we on getting the new website up?
Let me first say that, um, while we plan a little, a little more of a briefing tonight, Justin is, is out sick, first time. Um, yeah, to the extent that he's not even talking, he's just texting sometimes. And Megan is also, uh, out today, she has a pre-range pushing moment. What I can tell you is that the work on the website is ongoing, um, the, I, I, I think, uh, the goal is to have a presentation, all of you. I, I think the September twentieth meeting is the goal, uh, of the new website, including the new elder affairs page that's being developed as part of that. Because right now, there's a particularly lacking element of the town's website, so, um. Those are ongoing, uh, and, um, we're also looking at, uh, as Jean mentioned before, CRM, the customer relations. Relationship, um, management piece, um, there's one product that seems to have risen to the top and I, I want to get a little bit more. Uh, that won't come in September, but it'll come soon after, that's a plan. Uh, I just want to kick the tires out a little bit and that, that will require some potential funds, so I have to figure out how to do that. Uh, but that seems, um, like something, we missed some of the progress on it too, so that there's, uh, there's an interesting product. And those are moving forward. So, um. Again, I expect that, uh, Justin and they will be in front of you. Again, I think the September twentieth meeting is what they're shooting for. To, uh, to, to show off where we are and what the function looks like and. See where we are in the CRM, I can't commit to the twentieth unveiling, uh, asking for approval for our next step, but we're on target for something. Not too distant.
Uh, can you give us some deadlines that we can? That's in such a day?
So the twentieth is the goal for, um, to get, um, to have, that, that's when, you know, the, the plan is to have the presentation of the new website. So that's, that's the twentieth. And then, um.
The day to get this rolled out, Chris?
Uh, the, the goal, the hope is it'll be rolled out a little bit before that and, and like a cold opening. So you'll see it, you know, like Disney does rags, right? You do it, you do a, you do a soft opening, right? To make sure that things are working right. So that's, uh, the plan would be to have the finished product. Uh, hopefully kicking nicely, uh, and searching nicely, clicking nicely, I should say. Um, on the twentieth.
Paul? You're muted, Paul. I got it. That'll be for the town to see, right, Chris?
Yeah, yeah, all of you, it'll be right in front of, it'll be here at the board, so they'll present it publicly in front of everybody, so it makes sense.
So when do you think, because I remember Justin saying that we'd be ready for rollout September. But you all, we want to have time to get the town to kick the tires, there's going to be some input, we're going to suggest it and welcome it. Um, and then, you know, Justin will, I doubt he'll be busy on this for quite some time and I'm sorry to hear you say. But they get around.
September twentieth, at the board meeting of September twentieth, the plan is to have an active presentation, live presentation of the new website to this select. And to the public via, you know, Zoom and Facebook. Um, so that's, that's that deadline. And I, I, I could say that I don't have the select board meeting dates in October in front of me, but I'd say mid-October. For, uh, a CRM, maybe earlier, but I, I think then October is safe to, to present a CRM plan. So we, we, while we have a vendor, I, I really need to understand an implementation plan too. You know, we need to figure out how to make, how to make it work. And I don't want to half-bake anything, right? So I've done an implementation on a very large scale of a three-on-one system, which has CRM module in it. And that took a long time, that said, we're a lot smaller. We still need complete buy-in from departments and you need to be able to get the system working and set up properly. Um, from the beginning, and you don't want to half-bake it. So that said, I think we're small enough, uh, and I think this product is. Uh, adaptable enough to be good and roll out really well. So again, I'd say mid-October for that, Jack, so. I'll just say the fifteenth, but whatever, whatever, a select board meeting is around the fifteenth. Uh, in conjunction with this, we're looking at polling ops, polling software. Um, or options for that as well, as part of the whole, you know, getting the community engaged for zoning and, and other things. There's some interesting products, Justin and I were looking at them last week, he's exploring them. Uh, and if something, and we may have something cheap, I mean, uh, you know, this, this, we have survey, like, and stuff like that now. It's not statistically significant, but it's something. There are other products out there that have more statistically significant or. Or clear data that requires more work, but they do good work. So he's looking at those products. We're also looking at. How to, uh, affectuate this whole notice and comment option. Uh, there's software out there too, so it's quite expensive and it's geared for much larger governments than us, which is one of the challenges of being a kind of small place. Doing big things. That said, we also have an internal product, uh, that may actually solve that problem and we're looking at it now. That said, unfortunately, IT is a really focused on rolling out this new firewall. Uh, and they're also rolling out schools. So their focus right now is all about school, getting the firewall done and getting schools open. And then we're going to really jump into the, you know, getting a resident input comment. Module there that we can, we can make. So that's, I, 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 I don't want to put a deadline on it, other than we're looking to get something up. Uh, and available in conjunction with the beginning of the zoning public meetings, so that we can. All of those things at the same time.
Well, I think that's important. Um, and Justin, I, I know is, is working. I think that there has been some concern in some of these. Going out for a tour of minus light or he was off someplace a day doing something. It came across, I forget what it was. Uh, you know, it might be a better, more productive use of his time to keep in there on working on, in, in the town hall. On these things. Um, I'm not sure these other things, I mean, they're fun to do. They'll look nice on that, but we have a real urgent need for communication, so maybe we could focus him closer to home if that's okay. Jane.
On the statistical significance issue with the surveys, I'm not sure I agonize too much about that. The reality is we're a town of eight thousand people, you get three hundred people, you get a statistically significant sample. That's essentially not very helpful unless you stratify it into the cohorts you really want and need, which we probably don't have enough data to necessarily do. In any event, and it'll probably end up being a judgmental sample, because it's going to be everyone in town government who cares about it, who's going to be answering this over and over again. And so my only point is, it's, I think, let's try, but let's not like overwork it either. Just because I deal with these issues at my workplace and. I think sometimes people spend a lot of time and effort on these, the statistical significance that is. At the end of the day, you're going to get the same result. You know, with whoever ends up answering.
I, I believe me, the, the goal here is to have something that works for us and we're, you're right, we're a small town. At the same time, you want to make sure that it's robust enough to not allow the same person to respond seven times, right, uh, with different emails, right? So there's things like.
That I agree with, yes.
So.
Yeah, that's integrity, yes.
So when I say statistical significance, I mean that as much as anything, but I, I don't need to know that. What the people on Down Street feel is supposed to be one for somewhere, I'm not getting to that, maybe ingredients here.
Yeah.
Um, and again, the nice thing is this pre-existing products, they're not, you know, that's the nice thing, the entrepreneurialism.
Okay, so any other questions about communications and the updates from the, from the board? Okay, any further comments, Chris?
No, I, I, I mean, Justin's sort of up there and, and I think he's done a lot of great engagement. He's also. Yeah, I'm with your face, he's out there, he's at Seabird regularly, just talking to people, he's out, meeting with community groups. Um, he really spearheaded getting the seventh grade girls across team, some nice publicity for their adopt the Ukrainian refugee program. So he's been doing a lot of work with the schools, I mean, there's a lot of stuff that isn't always uh as dramatic as some of the things that you might see. Some of the videos, but he does a nice mixture. So very good, uh, very well with the clerk, you know, rolling out the early voting schedules and things like that, so. I gotta tell you, he does not rest. There's not a minute that I, that I see him that he's not actively involved in something.
Well, that's good and I'm glad you brought up voting, because we can move on to what's the status on uh remote voting.
So I had a very nice conversation with Tom Baker last week. Um, and uh, so. We're going to, um, I'll, I'll jump to the end, but we're gonna regroup formally after Labor Day, that said in the interim. Uh, he's working with some of our neighboring communities, had some conversations with that might be interested in this as well. Uh, sit you in the hangup, they, the two that jump out, not, not, and, and there are others we've already know about, Wayland. Well, I think it was Weston and a couple of others that were also looking at this. And um, so he's going to reach out to some of those organizations. I want to get. Uh, we're also trying to take the temperature of our representative and senator to see, you know, what's the next step on this? How would we proceed in the best way? So that we circle back to the board, probably in September, early October, depending on how Tom wants to pull something together.
Okay.
Something more concrete for all of you to talk about.
Okay, so you, you're working well with Tom and, and I know that it was difficult for him over the summer for, for some other reasons. So, um, and we'll be hearing back from that in. End of September, early October.
I'd say that's probably fair, a fair time.
Okay, yeah, he's, he's doing good work and I'm aware that he has worked, reached out to other towns and, and all that, so. But I think we just want to. Let people know that, that we're, we, we heard what town meeting voted on and we will get that implemented and. Tom's the guy to head it up, so thank you. Okay, any comments from the members of the board on remote voting? All right, um, approval of minutes. We have the minutes of six twenty-one, six twenty-nine, seven-seven, seven-twenty-six, eight-nine. Are there any um comments or corrections from the board on those minutes?
I have one.
I knew Diane, I was just waiting, I knew it was coming.
Sorry, really, very, very, very minor. Um, Tracy, on the minutes for June twenty-first, the um. The top of the page under infrastructure items, discussions of roads and sidewalks. It says thirty-seven miles of public roads and thirteen miles of public roads, and I think that that second public should just be private. Um, and other than that. I have no comments.
Any comments from the board? Okay, I think because of that, if the board is comfortable. Kind of an omnibus motion that covers them all would be in order, unless there's a member of the board who. Who feels they should be done individually by minutes. Not hearing that, um, Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll move, um, subject to the approval on the minutes for June twenty-first, the minutes of June twenty-first, June twenty-ninth. Uh, July seventh, July twenty-sixth and August ninth.
We have a second. Okay, we've had the motion made in second to approve the minutes from six twenty-one, six twenty-nine, seven-seven, seven-twenty-six. And eight-nine. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I call the vote. Diane.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul.
Paul Brady, aye.
Cory.
Cory Evans-Zay.
Jean.
Jeanne Haley Dipple-Dunn.
Jack Creighton. Aye. Okay. Town manager update, Chris, you've, you've probably updated us with every, any update, but if there's anything else.
We keep you busy tonight. Uh, so two quickies. So first, the paving. Uh, Sawyer Street is in its final stretch. Um, they're going to be finishing work on raising the, the grates and grills and things uh over the next day or two. Uh, they're going to be laying the new sidewalk down. The plan is um next Thursday. Um, uh, the, the next Tuesday and Thursday, I believe they'll be finishing the sidewalk, that's the plan, weather permitting, obviously. Uh, and then they'll be finishing um the paving next week. And um, they'll be doing the rest of the sidewalk, you know, the, any patching, all the upgrades have to be done to the rest of the sidewalk. That's, that's what I'm told. So the um, uh, that's uh ongoing and then Pond Street, uh, National Grid's ramped up. They're, they're doing a connecting piece, which I know has been very difficult to cross three A, which is. Um, uh, that's National Grid, putting in the, the next piece of their upgraded pipe. Uh, when that's concluded, uh, they'll should, they should be done, I believe. The whole staff swearing, certainly redone, unfortunately, pond will just be patched, pond will be repaid in the spring. Uh, but those work that will be completed. That's the road update. Uh, just two quick staff updates. Uh, our new assistant facilities director, Jake Ellis, started today. And Nick Berardi was very excited uh about that. And just in time for the opening of schools, lots and lots of work to do. Uh, you'll meet him at a future meeting. And our new treasurer collector, Linda Cole, begins a, a week from today. We're excited that Linda joined us and you'll be meeting her soon as well. So those are two good, uh, exciting updates.
Okay, and if the members of the board want to stop by town hall to meet them in person, I'm sure they're welcome.
Sure, and I should, yeah, so Linda starts next Tuesday and you're, you're not going to find Jake. If you want to see Jake, you may have to call ahead, because I think it's going to be all over the buildings and. And behind, but you will both, you will, we'll introduce them in, in front of a select board meeting as we've done in the past in September.
We want to watch him work. Okay, Jean.
I'm just a quick question, Chris, can you refresh my memory on Beechwood? I know that there, they were going to be paving a certain portion of it. And when we talked with Brian, he was uncertain about whether the sidewalks were going to be paved around that. Um, portion, I think it would be great to get clarity on that, you know, in the context of everything we've been discussing.
So the work that was generating this next phase was a, a water pot, water main, unfortunately, they had to rebid the project. So that rebidding is in progress, so it's pushed it all back a little bit. The goal is to have it done this fall. Um, so I will circle back with Brian as the status of the sidewalk work, but then I think that'll like it, all that work almost like it's done in the spring. It's the, 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 the goal is to get that water main done this fall, so all the repayment can be done in the spring. When I say spring, I mean, you know, when it's not wet and cold, so, you know, April, May.
The question is both timing and whether that will include portions of the sidewalk along those stretches.
I, I will, I, I, I believe the answer is yes, well, the sidewalks, I just have to circle back.
Any other uh questions from the select board? Okay, let's move to select board comments. Um, I'm going to. In order of what's on the screen is I'm looking at, I'm starting at my bottom left, that's Cory. And then it'll be Paul, Diane, Jean. Cory.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So I got two things, one, um, did want to do a shout out uh for his great work for Justin Schrader's, uh, two videos. One on the Cohasset Police School Safety Training. Um, anyone who drove by the schools uh. Last week, um, might have been alarmed by the huge police presence. It was a training, uh, public safety training. Uh, exercise and uh just a great video and, and uh words by our chief Quigley. Excellent. Other thing is a little video that uh Justin did about the greeters at town hall. Um, and again, just, just very nice, if anyone's wondering how that program works or, 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 um, you know, more background. That video has also gotten a little bit of attention from a few uh state groups, I understand, so uh just great work on that. Uh, second thing, and, and just because we all like to spend our time uh reading the Cohasset bylaws and kind of apropos of nothing else. Uh, the pronoun he is used thirty-four times in our bylaws, so uh at one point we could think about updating that. Thanks very much.
Paul.
Um, no, I don't really have any comments tonight. I've got a lot on my plate, so.
Okay, Diane.
Great, I just want to bring up again, um, having a conversation, especially before the hurricane season really ramps up, if it's going to. And the winter about cell service um on a certain section of town. Um, I'm kind of hoping that most of the trees have already fallen and we're going to be spared as we have this summer. But um, I know the, the emergency box is going to be installed at Black Rock Beach. But um, I know there's also been progress internally about protect, potentially identifying new places for cell towers, so. Um, it really is a big problem when there are big storms and there are trees down on the cul-de-sacs that open up onto Jerusalem Road. Because people cannot get out and there's zero cell service down here, so um, on behalf of my elderly neighbors and myself who's getting there. Um, it's just something I want to make sure we keep on our radar. Thanks.
Okay, Jane.
Um, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Labor Day. I hope everyone can enjoy it. Um, I know that. You know, school is about to start, which is a lovely time for a lot of us, and I know that my middle schooler. Enjoyed his orientation today. It's a great time for parents and kids who are looking forward to returning to school. Really more the parents than the kids, but um, I thought that the middle school did a great job with that and um. You know, to echo the comments about public safety too with the schools, I think it's great that we're proactively planning. Um, and that I do think we are making some progress too on getting. Some more clarity on where we are in the school renovation project with the state visiting us in September. And so hopefully stay tuned for. More information once we get more information.
Thank you, Jane. What I like to say is what I say every week, it is just a, it is a absolute. For someone like my, myself who believes in our government. Our, our way in which we figured out self-government with all of our issues and all of our difficulties. Week in and week out, watching the people in this town govern our little town. And go back and forth and figure stuff out and solve things. Just causes me to believe in, in what a wonderful town we live in and I am grateful all the time for that. And I really want to salute my fellow select board members and all the members of the boards and committees. And the staff of the town for the hard work that they do all the time. Thank you. And on that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We've had a motion to adjourn made in second. If, is there any discussion? Uh, roll call, vote, Diane.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul.
Paul Brady, aye.
Cory.
Cory Evans-Zay.
Jean.
Jeanne Haley Dipple-Dunn.
Jack Creighton, aye. This mo, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, each and every.